Let's move on to 8A, a resolution to increase the stormwater service fees effective July 1st. And Richard, are you there? Oh, Mayor Suthers. And John, I think your microphone's off.
How's that?
That's better.
Thank you, President Skorman, members of the council. I'll make a very brief introduction and then turn it over to the folks that know what they're talking about here. As you know, as members of this city council, at least those of you who've been here since at least 2015, I don't think there's any more vexing issue that we've had to deal with than stormwater. One, because it's not a--
Issue that is particularly appreciated by the general public. It's not like roads where they see the roads are bad. It's something that you only hear about when there is in fact a flood and stormwater systems fail or things like that. But the fact of the matter is, in 2015, as most of you know, we had a serious, serious problem. The voters had in November of 2014 rejected reinstatement of a stormwater fee. We had a notice of intent to sue from Pueblo. We had notices of intent to sue from the EPA, the state of Colorado. We were facing the prospect of delaying the onset of the Southern Delivery System, which would have created serious, serious problems in terms of our warranty coverage. And we went to work on this problem, and I think probably the most beneficial thing that happened was we hired Rich Malady as the stormwater director. And since then, an incredible amount of hard work has been put in to totally turn around our stormwater situation. It began with an IGA with Pueblo. Pueblo insisted essentially that we live up to the obligations we made prior to the time that our 1041 permit was issued, that we spend the amount of money that we were otherwise going to spend when we had a stormwater enterprise and a stormwater fee. That allowed us to turn on the Southern Delivery System on schedule in April of 2016. Unfortunately, that did not resolve all our issues with the United States and the state of Colorado. And we went through a fairly lengthy litigation process that had very unfavorable results for the city. And we went to the voters, if you recall. Some of you may have been around, you may recall when we first did some polling in 2015. The voters were very enthusiastic about doing something about roads, not so enthusiastic about doing something about our stormwater problems. And we spent a couple of years educating the public about our stormwater issues, to the point that by the summer of 2017, public opinion had changed and we had a majority support for reinstatement of a stormwater fee. And in fact, that's what happened in issue 2A in November of 2017. Then we began to continue to litigate our federal and state problems, and that was resolved in a consent decree issued by the United States District Court just recently. And you've been apprised of those details. But the fact of the matter is, we are now facing both a increase, a step increase in the IGA and also paying for essentially a $45 million agreement with the United States. And so we do have to deal with a stormwater fee increase. If you recall, in the 2017 provision, the language of that approved by the voters allows the city council to increase the stormwater fee in response to a consent decree, changes in law, IGA, things like that. And we're back here today to make a presentation about what that needs to look like. The good news is that we can increase the fee and lock it in after three years. That it will not change for 12 years. The bad news is, we've got upfront expenses and we do have to raise this fee on the front end over three years. And then we'll go 12 years without a fee increase. I just want to tell you how much incredible hard work has been put in by Travis, Rich, and his crew. A lot of, an awful lot of work's been done that they're going to present to you now. But folks, when you consider where we were in 2015, this resolution, while it doesn't involve a fee increase that I'm sure a lot of members of the public won't be excited about, this will be the final step in us establishing a stormwater system that I feel very strongly, over the next decade, will be the very best stormwater system in the state of Colorado. So with that, President Skorman, unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Rich Malady.
Richard, you're muted.
You're right. David, please go ahead.
Yeah, and Mayor, thank you. This isn't a question, it's a comment, and I was going to wait till the end of this. And it's a comment from my perspective as an attorney who, for 17 years, was involved in civil litigation, not to the extent of the complexity of this civil litigation. But from that attorney's perspective, I wanted to comment on the private attorney we hired and our city attorney's office, because whether through intentional or unintentional neglect, the city was set up to be hurt really, really, really badly in this lawsuit. And I don't think citizens appreciate it that much. And this is, from my perspective, an incredibly advantageous settlement from the perspective of the city, all things considered. And we need to give the stormwater group, Travis, and particularly the attorneys involved, great commendation. They have done a wonderful job protecting the interest of the city, which then translates to the interest of the citizens. And what we are doing is we are paying back an obligation that was incurred in prior administrations because of where we were and what we had not done with our storm system. So well done to the city attorney's office.
Councilman Geisler, thank you for that. And I think one of the most amazing things, in my opinion, is we're getting this done despite all the problems that were created for us in the past with stormwater. We're getting it done at rates considerably less than elsewhere in the state of Colorado and obviously across the United States. So I think that's a real tribute to these folks.
And I would just say that from a litigation standpoint, before we settled this and I saw what Judge Maitz did on the first three test cases, the amount of exposure to the citizens in the city of Colorado Springs was substantially higher than what we're going to see reflected in this proposal.
Important for people to know that we were anticipating this. When we asked the voters in 2017 to be able to have us levy this small fee, we knew that we were going to be here today. It's not what we were hoping. Obviously, we were hoping we didn't have any penalties or any obligations to the lawsuit, but we knew that this was going to happen. So it's not a surprise. Hopefully, the voters understand too that, you know, when we were asking, we knew that this was going to come forward. But we are being as careful as we can with their money. And, you know, I think it's a real compliment to our citizens and voters and, you know, maybe you, Mayor Suthers, and other people that were messengers. But people should know that there's 1,400 stormwater enterprises around the country, and maybe a dozen of them have ever gone to the voters. They're just part of public works or utilities or what communities, you know, pay to have this very, very important function. And so I think that, you know, we do it right here. And I want to express my pride and my compliments because we spell out what we are going to spend it on. Then we ask the voters, they give us permission. We say also, in this case, that we may have to raise it a little bit more because we have a lawsuit pending. And they said, sure, we trust you. And this isn't a blank check. This isn't something that we're going to, you know, take lightly. We are doing very important projects. And just also to sum up a little bit, what everybody knows at this diocese and in the room is that we have a particular problem here because we have such high, we have such elevation drop and highly erodible soil. And everything that goes into our stormwater system ends up into Fountain Creek. And so unlike many other cities in Colorado and around the country, we have to take this much more seriously because of just our simple geography. And, but again, I want to compliment staff for how hard they've worked and especially the legal staff. It could have been a $100, a $200 million lawsuit. And that's what many other penalties are around the country. And so I think that we've done an excellent job. And with that, I'm going to, I think, Richard, you want to come up and start explaining the details?
Yeah, one little last comment so I don't have to come up again. You're going to hear an option one and option two from Richard. And while option one reflects the proposal that I-- That the administration had last time. And several of you, in a closed session, asked for additional options, and that has resulted in option two coming back to you. I want to say at this point in time, I have no great, you know, investment in either one or two. I leave it to your discretion which direction you want to go on this. One of them winds up a little higher fee on a commercial, and one of them winds up with a higher fee on residential. I do, I do believe we'll get more pushback on the commercial fees, but I don't think that is ultimately what should determine it. I think what you decide is the fairest direction to go. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Rich.
Thank you, Mayor, for your words. Good morning, members of the city council. Good morning, President Skorman. I have, I have a short PowerPoint slide that we had posted, I believe, on Friday. I will go through that. We also submitted in the package the resolution and then a council memo. So I will go through the presentation. Please, you know, interrupt me if there's any questions or comments. And then if there are questions about the other items or the other pieces of information, you could please ask me about that. And at the end of the presentation, I put together, it's kind of, it's about 11 by 17. I'm sorry, the text is about the size of six font because we tried to get it into one page. But there are 10 examples of properties, different categories of properties across the city. We cannot show a property in the city, and these are real properties, but I can't show them because those are people, private citizens' bills. So, but it gives you kind of a general sense, commercial, residential, industrial categories like that, so.
That's right, Tom has new glasses today.
That's right. That's right. Well, I'm headed to glasses. I just learned that a couple of months ago, so. So I'm going to have to seek his input on what's the right pair of glasses to pick because I've never worn them before. My name is Richard Malady. I'm the Stormwater Enterprise Manager for the city of Colorado Springs. Can I use the clicker? Thank you. Okay. Mayor Suthers actually commented on the, on the city code in an indirect way. And that, I just wanted to put that in the presentation, we've talked about it before, just to lay out the authority of city council to adjust the fee based on those certain circumstances, which are complying with a valid court order, federal or state permits, federal or state laws, and then the, any intergovernmental agreement to which the city was a part of before June 1st, 2016. So as that is a backdrop, I just want to go quickly about the storm enterprise and its revenues and expenditures. Currently, the fee structure, residential, $5 per dwelling unit per month, and non-residential, which is everything else, commercial, industrial, municipal, all kinds of the other categories, $30 per acre on developed or improved acres per month. That, those rates have been in place since the ballot issued 2018, and that raises about $16.25 million in revenue. There are really three, if you boil it down, there are really three specific drivers to the fee increase. The step up in the minimum expenditures and capital project requirements by the city and Pueblo County IGA. In the council packet, I went in and adjusted that. It is a five-year block. We talked about forest. I don't, I'm not sure, we want to go into that level of detail, but it's in there. I also added, for a few council members, I added in there the portion that was distributed in that IGA between Stormwater, Stormwater Enterprise, and the Colorado Springs Utility Creek Crossing Program. So I just wanted to make sure that was, that was accurately represented in there. The next one is the consent decree itself that went into place on the 11th of last month, or sorry, this month, no, last month. What went to win? And so that consent decree is in place, that lawsuit is settled, and the consent decree has started and it will go for 15 years. And then--
And Richard, just to clarify--
Yes, sir.
The consent decree is essentially the court approval of the settlement between the parties, correct? In a general--
Yes.
Sense for the citizens to understand.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that is the settlement of the lawsuit. And maybe I'll just spend, you know, 10 or 15 seconds. That lays out over the next 15 years several things that the city must do, including building capital projects, improving and implementing new programs. There was a fine, there are other things in there, a whole host of things.
And just again, to clarify for citizens who may be paying attention, when we talk about the litigants settling a case and the court approving it, the court approval is the consent decree that the judge signed off on?
Correct. The consent decree is the judgment. And the IGA was five, there was the IGA block increase with $5 million in additional expenditures, the consent decree, and we'll, actually, the next slide shows you, but $45 million, and I'll show you. The last one, Stormwater Locates, that's just, the laws changed last year in Colorado, and Stormwater is now a Tier 1 locate, and we must respond to a locate call and locate stormwater utilities in any situation involving a-- These are average numbers. And later on in the presentation, I'll show some charts that show the expenditures related to, more specifically, each kind of component of stormwater. But just generally, if you average them out, the IGA increase, $1.7 million on the stormwater directly, $2 million in total. And that, that .3 average per year increase would be the Colorado Springs Utilities Creek Crossing Program. The consent decree, again, that's an average 2.9. I'll show you in the, in the charts. It is not, the expenditures that are required by the consent decree are not average. It's front-loaded, and the mayor mentioned to that. And that's to build certain projects early in the consent decree to, to kind of, to address the concerns of environmental damage over the last many decades. And then the Stormwater Locates, that's about $250,000 per year that Stormwater expends hiring locators, trucks, facilities, the system itself. There were some guiding goals and principles that we had going into this. And we changed this a little bit. I wanted to make sure everybody saw them. The first one is a solution that results in a more even, I really would put the more even percentage increase between residential and non-residential rates. You'll see later that they're not exactly even, and that has to do with round dollar numbers and just round dollar numbers, really. But to get that a little closer, a solution that provides revenue to meet the increases of the IGA and the CD required. So obviously, that's our intent, is cover those expenditures because we are legally committed to meeting those. And then, again, as the mayor talked about, a solution that does not require an increase within the 15-year term. So we would, we would raise rates in three, for the next three years. And then for 12 years, there would not be a rate increase. And I think that was a guiding principle that was very important. And then last, a solution that results in fees that are less than the average along the front range in nationally. We really wanted to be at the average or a little bit less, and we had hoped to accomplish that. So let me go into a few assumptions. You can kind of, I don't know if it's worth going through, but these are just financial assumptions that we made. 2% annual growth in non-residential, 1.2 in residential. We did assume a collection rate of 94, 95. We do have some data, obviously, going back. We've been billing now for about two years and really collecting that fee. And so we have a good idea of where our collection percentages are. Those are actually a little less than what we are collecting right now. We collect about 96%, maybe 96.5%. They're about 1% lower than what we would expect for two reasons. One, if you're in a recession, which we've been in a very robust economic expansion for many, even with COVID, in some, in some markets, like the construction market, you need to make sure that you're not always planning financially for the best of times. And then a 3.5% annual growth on operating expenses, kind of typical. And then the 2% annual growth on capital construction, that is, matches what was detailed and modeled in the Pueblo County City of Colorado Springs IGA. That's probably a little bit low, but yet another reason why we kind of wanted to make sure our collection rates allow for any kind of fluctuation above our control. So let me kind of talk about the two options that we brought today, and this was in the, this was in the packet. So in both options, we would raise the rates in 2021, starting, these are year-over-year, July 1st. So in July 1st of this year, we would raise the rates. And then July 1st of 2022, we'd raise them again. And then in July 1st of 2023, we would have the final adjustment, and those would stay in place until 2035. So always hard to talk about numbers when people can't see them. It's like numbers on the radio, but you can see them. Right now, it's $5, so in option one, you'd go to $6.50 on the residential, option two, $7. You can kind of see it flow through. Then you go to $7.50 on option one, same thing with option two, and then $8.50, and then eight. Couple of things we're trying to do, and you can kind of see it in that. We're trying to get to 8.50, eight. Those, you can see in the examples and the exhibits. For a typical house, you know, a regular kind of everyday house throughout the state, those averages are closer to $10 or $10.40. So those are well below the average. And they're, they're round numbers, understandable, and you can kind of see it's a 50 cent increase or a dollar increase. So something that makes sense. We also have to balance that with matching our expenditures, which I'll show you in the graphs. We really wanted to do that. And we don't want to raise more money than we, than we would require, and certainly not less. So we want to kind of fit that in there. The commercial, starting at 30, you see option one, $8, option two, 40, 50. And then they, they go down from there at really $2 or a $1.50 increase per year. Option two is probably the most evenly distributed. Again, it's not exactly even because otherwise we'd have numbers like $7.40, you know, 52 cents or $43.01, you know, something a little odd. So let me show you what this looks like in a graph form to get, give everybody an idea of where our revenues are and where those increases in expenditures required fall. This is a chart of the expenditures and the projected expenditures for the enterprise from 2021 to 2035. The kind of dark, it's red, but I think it looks kind of brownish. But the dark red, brown line, if you will, that's our current revenue. So you see it's around 16.25. And obviously, we're in a little bit of a gap. And that's because we've already, we already have those additional expenses from the IGA, and we have some additional expenses that, that we have incurred in the last several years. You can see this as option one, and I put the rate increase steps in bold up front. And that's why you see that arc. And the red, the light red, would be our projected revenue. And you can see, we're starting off, obviously, this year will be a little short. Next year, we would kind of hit it. And these are based on collection percentages that we talked about. 2023, we'd raise more revenue, but obviously, we need to use that to cover our initial shortfall this year. Then you get to that major step up in those IGA requirements. The yellow is the IGA. And you can see that really shows you that front-loaded, where we've got to spend about $11.5 million in channel improvements in the first six years. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Richard, just to clarify again for citizens. So the black line assumes that the collections that we are currently making continue.
Correct.
The red line is assuming that we pass either option one or option two. The gap between the two is still a city obligation. And if we don't adjust the amount of collections, that gap is going to be taken out of the city general fund, which funds public safety, streets, parks, all that other stuff, right?
Well, I can't tell you where the funding comes from, obviously, the mayor, but you're right, yes. But the enterprise--
We owe it.
Yes, sir. The answer ultimately is the enterprise does not currently receive enough revenue to cover that gap.
And the city is responsible for getting that gap? We can either do it through the enterprise or through the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I--
I think what's important to state is that we go through a budget prioritization process each year, which the mayor and the council all contribute. But what it would ultimately result in is a delay in the projects being completed in a timely fashion.
That's right. That's one of the options, yes.
Thank you.
Now, obviously, the consent decree, not every dollar in the stormwater is, can be spent the same way. Obviously, consent decree, we have no option. That will be spent. It is a federal mandated court order. If we did not, well, we're going, we have to do that. Yeah. I was going to say, I don't know what happened. You have to do that. So this, this is option one. I just wanted to kind of show you that jump that we're making and then show you that we try to fit the line. You end up having a little more, we're a little short, obviously, in '25, '26, but we will plan that through to revenue in '27, '28. And then you have a little bit. But then, when you get to the end of the consent decree, you're a little behind again. But you can see, we can, we can level that out through budgeting.
Just kind of explain the general principles behind option one and option two with, because she can't see the chart in the detail.
Yes, sir. So where we're at is, we have, you can, what the chart shows is really three main buckets of expenditures. We have the operating and maintenance, that'd be the people and the functions and all the equipment and the operating of the enterprise and the maintenance of our infrastructure. And then you have a second bucket, which is in green. Those are capital project requirements. Those are the required capital projects through the IGA and the other capital requirements that the city has to build. And then we have another bucket, which we're showing in yellow, which is the consent decree expenditures. What we're showing is the minimum expenditure each year to meet that year's required commitments. And they're not all the same. Some years, you have some commitments. What happens really is in 2024, there's a substantial jump in the, in the requirements for the consent decree. And that's because we have to start construction on about $11.5 million in capital projects related to that, on top of the about $11 million to $12 million in capital projects that are required by the IGA. So that creates this steep hill to get over. So what we're showing in the graph is, right now, we collect about 16.25. We need about $21 million, about $21.5 million. The option would not quite, in this first year, it would not actually collect that much revenue. It'd be a little short. But then in 2022, it would collect the revenue you need. 2023, it'd be a little more revenue than what we need, and we'd use that to finish the projects from this year. We would carry them forward. Then you get to that '24, '26, and the revenue is very close to what we need, maybe a little below it. Then you get out of that huge hump to get over for the CD. And there's a little additional revenue that we use then to go back and, in a sense, fill the gap from the previous three years. So that's kind of the features of how that's working.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Thank you, Richard, for bringing that up.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I guess the punchline is that-- You know, I guess the punchline is that this option, it's a little short going into it because some of us were concerned about the recession that we're in and COVID and all the pressures, but it then increases more than the other one, option two, you'll talk about here, but it's really about just asking for what, we're getting what we need right from the beginning and not have a steeper increase a little bit down the road. Is that right, Richard?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and you really need to start, you know, what we try to do is- Try to do is start with the lowest rates that we can, but then to make sure you got to get over that 2024 hump, because those are required by federal court order. So the next one, you can see, similar, you have a little bit less of a gap in the first year, but a little bit less, but, and that's because, and I'll just flip back real quick, you had $6.50 on the residential, well, this option just goes right to seven. So you have a little bit more residential the first year, still a little bit of a gap, but you can see, still kind of the same premise, you get over 2022, a little bit short in '23, and then '24 through '26, you're right at it, maybe a little short, so we're going to do some budgeting, make sure we have the revenues there that we can then make up that shortfall in '27 through '30. So it's kind of a similar idea, actually, there, you know, if you look at the way they model our expenses versus revenues, they're really not that much different. They're really not. And that, one of the points I wanted to make was, either of these work. You know, I wouldn't bring them to you if they didn't work. And so it's, you know, it's more of a, how's it feel? And so the second one, same thing, works, revenue is fine, will be there. Maybe the key to the second one is, it's, like I said earlier, it's probably the most evenly, it is, sorry, it's not probably, it is the most evenly distributed increases year-over-year between residential and non-residential. And that was one of those guiding principles. Hey, can we, can we kind of more equally increase between the uses? So I have a summary slide, and then I have those exhibits, and I'll ask you in a second if you want to see. So summary, I just said this, I just, you know, recap, the options that we've showed you do provide the revenues, they don't provide, you know, a bunch more, and they certainly don't provide less, we think they're right there. They're based on collection data from the last few years, so that's good. It's, we're not totally in the dark there, I have a pretty good idea of the collection rates and where we're at, and obviously, the infrastructure, so to speak, for the enterprises in place, and we have customer service, we have very robust programs to be able to implement that and help people through it and answer their questions. I really said the third point, which is, both fees are below the state average, and that's really shown in every situation in the handout, although it is size four font. So if you want me to get a bigger one, I could do that. I think our GSKI thought it was going to be on a 24 by 36, so. The proposed options seek to more evenly distribute, and we talked about that.
Richard, go ahead, Wayne.
I have not so much a question as a comment. First, thank you for making the changes that I and others had requested. I think the provisions of option two that take it to a flat rate are much better than some of the earlier proposals I saw, and also better distributed amongst our residential and our commercial entities, and so thank you for doing that, and thank you also for coming up with a workable way to make that happen. And I do prefer option two, but I just wanted to say, sometimes people come with a proposal, and they're not flexible on how to get it done, and I appreciate your and the administration's flexibility in coming up with what I believe is a better proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Don?
Yeah, thank you, Richard. Yeah, I too am in favor of option two. When you run the math, at the end of the day, at the end of the three years, on option one, residential would have gone up 70%, while businesses would have only gone up 40%. In option two, it's a lot more even, 60/40, or 60/50, I'm sorry, 60% for residential, 50% for businesses. And as Richard Malady said, you know, trying to get it to 55/55 would have, you know, thrown in some really odd numbers, and I do agree with Wayne's comment from two weeks ago that having nice round numbers like this is probably a lot easier on everybody than that. So I'm too in favor of option two. I also want to thank the entire executive branch, the mayor, everybody, for making sure this is the one and only increase that we're going to be doing over the remaining 15 years of the IGA and the consent decree. Because the IGA, as people, citizens may or may not remember, is going to go up two more times. It went from $100 million to $110 that we have to spend over five years, and then it's going to go up to $120 in five years from now, and it's going to go up to $130 in the last five years of it. And getting ahead of the ballgame like this, so we're not coming back every five years, I really appreciate that foresight of that. Just one note, I got the highest integrity for both Rich Malady and Travis, I hold them in the highest integrity, they've proven to be straight above. But there is one clause that is in the ballot language, is state or federal laws that can come down. And even included in this, even though it's not much, is 225K for locators, Stormwater locators, that we have to do now, do when you call before you dig, which was an unfunded mandate from the state. And, you know, in the next 12 years, I'd be surprised if we don't get more unfunded mandates from either the feds or the state. So while the intention is good, I wouldn't say 100% positively we'll never raise these rates again, because we may have to because of fund dates, but I appreciate the executive branch trying to get us head of the game with everything they do know as of today.
Okay, thank you, Don. Bill?
Yeah, the, sure everybody understands, this is something that I thought wouldn't occur, because we've told the public for years that development's going to pay for itself. This isn't as much a success story as it is a recovery operation. And we're now out over half a billion dollars of Stormwater recovery costs. And I'm going to support option two, because that's the fastest and best way to recover from being so far behind in these environments. But I respect and wish that both the council and the executive branch gets a little bit further ahead of this particular, these particular power curves, and so we don't need to lurch from court case to court case. I'm hoping, as Councilman Knight mentioned, that this will put a temper and stop these particular, what is it, legal actions that we end up paying for in so many different ways. So I support option two. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment? You know, I think, Richard, did you want to make any more representation on this?
No, sir. The only thing I wanted to offer was if there were any questions on the handouts, and, you know, so if there were any questions, I didn't want to go, there's a lot on there, probably takes two hours to go through, I don't want to do that, but if there are any questions on it, or if there was any use, you know, if you guys, if there's any other, we tried to cover every use I could think of, you know, to give everybody an idea of where. So if there's anything like that, just let me know, you know, if there's another type of facility.
Okay. David, you have a-
Yeah, just again, this echoes what I was talking to the mayor about earlier, and it's just a comment, it's response to Mr. Murray. When you enter into a consent decree, one of the wonderful things about litigation and entering into a settlement is, we now are looking face-to-face, eye-to-eye with the EPA, with the Colorado Department of Health, and that's what a settlement does. And so, and so while there is always the opportunity or the possibility that council or the administrative staff will do something to subject us to further litigation, in this case, excuse me, in this case at least, the settlement agreement is de facto, the EPA and the Colorado Department of Public Health and the other interested parties saying, we are now back at a baseline, and going forward with the baseline, this is what we have to do. So I give kudos to that. That's one of the reasons why this is such a frankly remarkable settlement, given the potential exposure and the leverage that the other litigant had following the initial rulings from Judge Mache.
Okay. And David, you have a growth on your ear. I don't know why it showed up suddenly. So is there, I think I agree with everybody so far that option two is the best one. It's just clear, and we can really start to get going. Is there anybody who prefers option one, where it's a little gentler in the beginning and then more, a little steeper in the middle? Because I think we may have a consensus here to go on option two. Anybody else want to weigh in on this?
You know, Richard, just the one thing that I noticed is that option two is steeper for 12 years in perpetuity after that, whereas option one is gentler, beginning three years from now for the succeeding 12 years. So I think it's a no-brainer, and it's fair.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Well, good, Richard. Thank you, and Travis, and everybody, especially our legal team for settling this case, and utilities for all their contributions, you know, $50 million to the Fountain Creek Watershed, flood control in Greenway District, and more, most importantly, we are in a position as a city to have water, high-quality water, for decades or a century or more to come, unlike many other cities that are struggling, and this was a big part of it. If you, if we didn't step up for the Stormwater part, we wouldn't have 58 million new gallons of fresh water, high-quality water for our citizens in the future. And so all this is connected, and we all played an important role in it. So thank you, staff, thank you, legal team, thank you, utilities, and now thank you, council and the mayor. So, well, I think you have your marching orders, and we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.